Welcome everybody to the Monroe Planning Commission Regular Meeting. It is Monday, July 14th, 2025, 7:00 PM. Hannah, will you please do roll call?
I would love to. Commissioners present and establishing a quorum. Commissioners Dawkins, Lockhart, Lowe, Petrino, and Walsh excuse our Commissioners Balk and Blair.
Thank you. And we do not have anyone present for public comments today. So we'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 4.1, which is a proposed amendments relating to permit processing in Washington Senate Bill 5290. And Kate will be doing the presentation on that.
Yeah, thank you. So this is a quick update. It includes the schedule for the rest of the process. Again, this is the time clocks that we have to review. Most, we call them quasi judicial applications. So that's our subdivision or conditional use permit. And the state back in the 90s said, well, cities, you need to do this within 120 days. It was more of a generic clock. And now they've gotten a little bit more specific. If you have a permit that doesn't require any public notice, it should be done in 65 days. If you have a permit that requires noticing but not a public hearing, it should be done in 100 days. And if you have a public hearing, it's 170. There's some caveats in there. The city is like, okay, your application is complete, but oh, we need some more information. We can stop the clock. And so that's what all of these amendments are working towards. So at our last meeting, I presented the first round for changes to each chapter impacted by this change. And so tonight, in addition to walking through the final schedule, I'm just going to really quickly run through your packet on the changes. So between our last meeting and tonight, I had an opportunity to review the materials with our legal counsel. And they made a couple of recommended changes. We had a couple of discussions and there's still, I think, two items that I need to have finalized, which I would like to bring back to you at your second meeting in July. So with that, I'm going to quickly get started and I'm going to tell you the page numbers in your packets. There aren't a whole lot, but I again, just want to keep you posted where I'm at. So the first one is on page eight. It's the top of the page and we are in the administrative enforcement section, Chapter of our Code. And this was a conversation. I had brought to you a concept, well, maybe we should have this as a permit too, where the public could have input when staff is looking at a interpretation. And as we discuss that further, that's really a technical conversation. It should be the city, but by keeping it as a type one, if the proponent who is challenging the code or requesting a change, keep it as a type one, they can still appeal. So an example of this is two years ago with the PUD, there was a conversation, our code for the tourist commercial zone allows a collection of government uses. And they wanted to do outdoor storage, but outdoor storage is specifically prohibited from the zone. And their request for interpretation was, well, you've got these other government uses. And so they requested an interpretation, actually went to our hearing examiner. The hearing examiner said, no, your code is really clear. So there's the technical review and then there's the ability to appeal. So we're keeping it, that's a very long explanation for keeping it as a type one permit. That is the only other change in that chapter. The next one begins on page 105, and this is the definitions. And we went through and you can see in your handout, it's yellow, which action we're going to do. So revise or add. So there were only, I think the only other thing that we talked about changing, sorry, what page? Oh, I'm sorry, page, oh, sorry, 11. I'm like looking at the end.
I thought you said it, but I didn't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, my apologies on that. Yeah, and the other one on this one, a clarification on 123. The fourth one down, we're going to be moving to project permit or permit, project permit application. The underlined red at the end, we're adding that to be very specific, that it does not include building permits because after the state took action, they actually made another amendment this year to be very clear that building permits are not included. And so that's what that additional language is for. Other than that, there were no additional changes. It's just letting you know, we are going to add what we're going to revise. All right, moving on to the signs chapters, this is pages 14 and 15. The, in this chapter, I was able to, the new strike through and underlining is in black. I've got the red, black color blindness, but the, the changes are on page 14. Number one, we are striking extraordinarily difficult and changing it to unable, to be clear, because that's what a variance is. And then you'll see the additional changes on page 15, the same section. Again, we're striking numbers three and four. Not, those are the only changes in the sign code. Am I going too quickly? Do you have questions? Okay, okay. And then I apologize, I had added the subdivision chapter in here, but I was going through my notes again and there are no changes. So we can skip all of that, which is pages 17. 17 through 40. So then we're really getting to the meat for our conversation. Chapter 2284 is where we have our permit processes in the Monroe Municipal Code. One thing that I wanted to clarify, the Senate bill that passed, it excludes boundary line adjustments, but it doesn't exclude it from review. And so when I was speaking with our, our legal staff, we're going to keep it as a type one permit, but we're going to make a notation very similar to our subdivisions. State statute says for short plat or for final plats, you have 30 days to complete the review. For the preliminary part, you have 90. That's right. And so we'll make a similar notation that even though we're processing boundary line adjustments as a type one permit, it is not required to meet that 65 day clock. The reality is, this is one of the easiest applications for us to review. So what this is, is if you have two properties or you have a property, you have, you have to have at least two properties because you're moving lines around. You can't create a new lot, but you might want to make one bigger. I've seen it actually multiple lots and so you're making it more usable. And it's a, it's a pretty straightforward process. It's working with surveyors. So that's my caveat as I begin.
Yes. Okay, so on that. So you have a house with this extra, like a big lot, you could, so you could actually move the line, the property line, like close it to the house and make the lot bigger? Is that right?
You have to have two lots.
Oh, two lots, okay.
Yeah, you can't, you cannot, a boundary line adjustment does not create another lot. It's a process where you're, you're trying to make it more usable. Or another great example is there's a property dispute where a property, one property owner has had a beautiful hedge in a particular area. And it turns out it was 10 feet on some adjacent property owner's parcel. And they've been maintaining that strip for over 20 years. And they, they work with the property owner to move that lot line to make that part of their land because they've been maintaining it. That's a pretty frequent situation where there's a boundary dispute.
Yeah, I've heard of that. What about, is there a certain size?
No, the lots just have to meet the minimum standards.
Okay, code.
So whatever zone it's in.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so the first change here, and this is, most of this is just typo, formatting clarification on language. The first one is on page 42 with the accessory dwelling units. This, the citation, the request was made, the request was made to make it consistent with the other items below. So accessory dwelling unit shall meet the requirements of MMC 2616. There were more words and it was written out differently. So that's, like I said, there's a pretty non substantive changes. So that's the first one. The next one is on page 44, item D1. And that was just a typo. So that's, the next group is on page 46, beginning at the top of the page number, item number four. We're clarifying that these are consolidated permits. So if you look on page 45, this is under, it starts with SIPA, talking about consolidating. So we're just clarifying what that is. The next one is on letter D. And, oh, so talking about the development application, it was actually shifted to Section E that we'll get to in a, in a moment. It was not appropriate to have the process in that subsection. Okay, and then in E, we've done some minor editing. Also to capture, when we accept an application, the two things that you have to do for a complete application is that the applicant has to provide everything that's in the application that's asking for, and you have to pay a fee. And so there are two things that are a little bit different. So if you have an application that requires a public hearing, we request that you provide a deposit for the hearing examiner because we actually charge that, that's an extra cost for the application review. And then the other one is if there's a critical area, we, when we do, we do a third party review. And so we have to contact that consulting firm, say this application's come in and they give us an estimate. So we want that done as part of that fee payment. So that's doing, that's some of the revisions in that, in E, just the first paragraph. The next one, we're just number changes in sections 1A and 1D. And then F. F and G are, are combined, or they're together. And this is on page 49. I'm sorry, yeah, F and the new G. So our Development Review Committee, the way it reads right now, you would think that we would have outside utility providers, but we don't. It's only the fire district, so I'm going to start here first. F is, F1 is being rewritten, so it's very clear, it's city staff. And then there's the Homish Regional Fire, because they actually review all of our applications. And we do charge fees for that. F, we are adding in, because not only is it important for us to reach out to our utility providers, but we just learned a couple of weeks ago that like the Williams Northwest Pipeline, we are actually required by state law, any application that comes in within 100 feet of one of their pipelines, we have to notify them. So F is something, it's something that we do in practice, but we're codifying it. So any future planners, permit techs come in, they're like, oh, okay, this is how our practice works. And the other ones would be Roosevelt Water District, Comcast. And so we're really trying to be clear that, that we're treating them basically like a staff, but they're not staff. And so that, that steps being added. And the only reason I really wanted to bring that to your attention is I had to have the same conversation with our attorney. She was concerned that by adding this step in, it would add time. And I explained, no, 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 we, we send this out just, we're treating them like staff. They have the same amount of time to do a precursory review to let us know there's a problem. Okay, so page 50, items A, B, C, and G were all modified just a little bit. So if you go back to your original packets from our last meeting, A was removed, or we're, we're completely striking it because comprehensive plans are explicitly excluded. So if somebody comes in and says, I want to do a rezone for my property, but they also have to do a comprehensive plan, we're going to say, we're not going to accept your rezone because you have to do a comprehensive plan process first. Here's the process for that. And so we would turn them away from the rezone because it's not consistent with the plan, which is one of the first requirements. And because it's excluded, it does not need to be included in this section. Then second, B, C, B and C are being modified to be consistent with the language of the Senate bill. In C, you'll see the reference to that RCW. And then G is also clarifying, this is just some minor edits to make sure we're explicitly consistent with the state law. It was worded a little bit differently. Still doing good. And then we've got, again, some minor typo changes. This is page 52, item C1 is changing title to chapter. You'll see that again on page 54, 2284060A1. And then the next change is on page 55 in the table. This is where we're adding boundary line adjustments back into the type one table. And again, we'll have a asterisk that it has to meet, or it doesn't, it does not have the timeline, but we're processing it like a type one permit. Again, just as a reminder, the type one, no public notice, it is administrative approval, appeal to the hearing examiner. Type two, we are required to notice the public. And then it's also appealable to the hearing examiner. Type threes are our public hearings and those are heard by the hearing examiner and appealable to Superior Court. Type five is a new category. This is a site specific rezone. So the hearing examiner will make, or they'll do the, we call it an open record hearing where all the participants and any interested parties have their say, they bring material to that hearing. And then the hearing examiner will make a recommendation to the city council. They are the final body and then that is appealable to Superior Court. That type five is also, or type five is new. And these are items that, the city council is the only body, but it's annexations in both development agreements. They, their annexations, if they don't want to see it, they, they can say, we're done. That they, there's no, they're not required, like the quasi judicial will just say, well, it's not consistent with our code. It's not meeting our goals. That is their authority. Development agreements are the same thing. Again, that's a contract between the city council and a proponent of property and proponent. And then those are appealable to Superior Court as well. And then the type four or the type sixes used to be the type fours. These are our legislative processes. So these are all the items that come to Planning Commission and then they go to City Council. If they are appealed, they go to the Growth Management Hearings Board. So we're extending our former list of four permit types to spicks. Okay, yeah, okay. Page 60 of 105. This is a, this is a new section. Again, this is trying to, where we've had an applicant come in and they've got a great proposal and we're going through the process and then they submit something that's completely incompatible. So they're doing a four lot, a short plat, and now they're coming in with a site plan for 16 apartments. We would say your first applicant is voided if this is what you're going to pursue. You cannot have two applications on the same property. You have to pay them. So that's what this gets at. And so in section, on section one, on page 60, that was just a clarification that it's the zoning administrator because that's who oversees our municipal code. And then there were just some clarifications with A1 talking about when it gets withdrawn. Trying to figure out a better way to highlight the changes for you. So might just highlight them so they're easy to identify at your next meeting. Again, they're not substantive, but important nonetheless. Great. And that's it. Any questions? Do you have any questions about permitting, where we're headed with this?
I have a question and sorry, I don't know how to raise my hand online. Hi, everybody. I was just wondering on page 60 at the very end, when it says, it's B2, or Roman numeral two, it says would not be deemed to occur. And like, I couldn't wrap my head around what, is that like, just not happening? Or I'm not sure what that phrasing means. It's at the very end of the sentence, page 60B2. I can't tell if it's a double negative or if it means like, it's just not happening. I, I just couldn't understand that wording.
I'm going to, I'll work on the wording. The, the, the intent to get is that, that idea that a second application has come in and it is so different than the first one, that it has essentially voided the first application out. So I'm thinking it's a double negative, but I'm going to work on that.
And everything else was super clear on that. Because that makes sense, like you shouldn't have to be doing double the work on something that's not going to happen, right?
That's the hope.
Yeah, okay. That was my only question. Everything else seemed, like it made sense.
Great, thank you for that question. Okay. That's it. Oh, I was scheduled, sorry. So I did submit everything to Department of Commerce. We can ask for an expedited review. It's not a comprehensive plan amendment, so I should have a comment back from them. If there's not concern at the state level within 14 days, this is 100% exempt from SIPA review. This is all procedural. And so I am going to come back one final time at your meeting in two weeks. I am sitting in the public hearing for August 11th. Hopefully that goes smoothly. And then I will bring findings and conclusions for your consideration on the August 25th. And then we will forward it to City Council for their review and consideration in September, October. And the final piece on this is the way the state law was, or the, that Senate bill was written is we are following these new time clocks anyway. They preempted our regulations. And so that, that was one of the reasons we're like, oh, we can take a little bit of time to make sure what we're doing works from the rather. So that is the schedule for this.
Moving on to Agenda Item 6.1, this is in the special by Commissioners and Zapp. Then we will start with the downtown festival lot conceptual options.
Yeah, so this, this, a question was raised.
Um, the, I think that I was not working on, on looking at the, the presentation. Or is it not up yet?
No, I'm not bringing up the presentation tonight.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's great for.
I have it up, but my computer's at 3%, but I already looked, reviewed some of that.
Gotcha. So this was in response to a conversation like four, five meetings ago. Bob brought it up. He was like, I'd like to see it. And so I just, I wanted to get it to you. This is the packet that went to City Council. I wasn't going to do a presentation because it's, it's already out there. Hopefully you got to go to one of the open houses or got to talk to Patrick and Liam at the farmer's market. The update on this, so first I wanted to provide the presentation for you to review. But the update is Patrick and/or Liam will be coming to a Future Planning Commission meeting. The first round of public outreach ended at the end of June. And so they're going to provide a summary. So the next steps on this project, very high level, are they're trying to get a pack, a, 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 a package together so we'll get into the budget season. They might be able to do a little bit of work. And so there's no funding for the big picture project, but if they can pick away at it, that's kind of the intent to, to get some movement. And so might be your next meeting, I need to coordinate with Liam, but they'll be giving you a summary of what they learned from the open houses and the online survey. I can try to answer questions, but I'm definitely not the expert. Any questions, Bob?
Yes, probably. I saw the online thing, but I didn't see anything. I mean, I thought they mentioned the open house, but I didn't know they were set. I missed that, I guess.
Oh, yeah, they had them actually at the bank building that the city purchased.
That's where they were going to be.
And then they were, they were at.
I wondered if that's when I was gone.
Yeah, it was a very, so they, so this meeting was.
I didn't see the dates for some reason.
They did every, they did the outreach in the month of June. I don't remember the specific schedule.
The voting for the different, for different options. I put the image June 30th, but I didn't, I don't know why. I must have missed that, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think that's your last opportunity to provide comment.
No, it's fine. I just guess I missed it, but yeah, I didn't realize that, I thought that was still coming for some reason.
No, but you'll get an update.
All right, moving on to additional discussion by Commissioners and Zapp. Let's start with Bob online.
I don't find the mute button. Thank you for getting this info. I, I mean, it's really, I'm really excited about the opportunities to do something there. And it, and it's a good problem. Whenever I go downtown, I can never find a place to park. And so that's a good problem to have. But we have to do something to mitigate that as much as we can. Now, I'm not sure that 33 spaces is going to make a big dent in the problem, but it's better than zero spaces. But I, I like the options. I like some of the options better than the others, but I will be putting input in on that. Like I said, I was downtown. It was very lively on Saturday. The good weather helps. Businesses were doing really well and that, that is very, very encouraging. But we have to do something to make it easier for people to do business downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy.
Hi, um, yeah, I kind of wanted to ask a question to everyone about landmarks that they see in other cities. On, because like when I was looking at these concepts, I was like immediately thinking of Fremont and that big rocket or like, I don't know, landmarks around the country on, that bring people in to these kind of squares just to see it and then stay in downtown. And I was just wondering if, like, anyone had anything that just pops up in their head about things that like are, that brings people to these bigger cities, like the Space Needle. Obviously, we're not going to do that in Monroe, but just, I was wondering if any of you had any ideas that just immediately like come to your head right now? And if I'm allowed to ask that right now, I'm not sure. It's open discussion.
Yeah, we're, we're an open discussion.
Okay. Because I, I was just curious, like, on, I feel like that brings a lot of people to areas, but anybody? If not, I, I just thought of Fremont immediately and that big giant weird rocket. Okay, if nobody has any ideas on that, then.
There is a comment. On that, I think we need to figure out what it is that, like, what is Monroe? You know, like what, you know, you can't just throw something out there like, oh, this is part of Monroe. You have to figure out what's Monroe. You know, like, you know, Monroe Bearcats, that's the high school. The smoke stuff is another thing. People.
The smoke stuff was the first that I thought.
That's huge, yeah, that's huge. And that it did get painted was amazing because Matt Vernon has that as well. They have a two and one theirs. So we have to just figure out what it is that is Monroe. I mean, what is Monroe?
And I think going back to our mission statement is, like, we're all flowing into that. And it's like, it feels like all these visions are coming together. And then this festival lot is going to make that kind of a plus, like bring it to life. So that's pretty cool. And I thought that presentation was really well done. Like all those concepts were just like so clear on, on the option. On the options and so the next, they're gonna be, you said, voting on that, those those four options. In the next couple months. That you said.
Uh yeah, I don't. Well, well, when Patrick um. Our economic specialist comes, he can provide you more of what this process is, this was really. Starting to have the conversation with community, we have a limited amount of funds. What are some things that achieve what we've heard from the community, did we hear what you wanted? Correctly, um some of the earlier items, I don't, I don't know if you saw the first council presentation, but there was. Um two additional items that got thrown out right away. Uh one had a a multi-story um mixed-use building that took up kind of a large chunk. And there was another example that included a um multi-story parking garage that could be multifunctional. But there was immediate visceral reaction to those two, so they did not make it to this step. Um so I don't, I don't know if if voting on a particular one is. The right way to think about this, I think these were. Yeah, um just really, how do you feel about this option, here are different ways um of providing amenities? Do you like this amenity? And so the concepts will eventually merge into a project. But I I'm not, I'm not sure that one will be better than me, yeah, yeah, and so when Patrick. So I'll make sure that um he can give you a better description of how this process is gonna move forward.
Okay. And then I'm glad to really hear that things were happening on Saturday because I feel like I've seen a lot less. Action downtown um during the week and stuff and Sky Sky River Bakery's closing and there's things that are closing and it's like. I've been feeling like the downtown has been looking a little bit like um on the like. Sadder side lately, but I haven't been there on the weekend, so that's, I'm really happy to hear that and maybe I just need to get out there. Again. That's all I got, oh, oh, I actually kayaked to the sky comish and it was awesome, so get out there and get in the water, it's like perfect timing for it. And that's all, yeah.
Mary.
Okay. I'm gonna talk a little bit about that, you're right, um the downtown, I'm driving through it because I go there every day. Two, three times a day, um it is looking kind of sad and I'm really sad. That the bakery closed because that actually was kind of like. It pulled more people down that end. So now there's really, you know, another business gone. And so we need to try to get more people to start coming down there, but we have to have stuff for them to go to, does that make sense? Yeah, so hopefully, fingers crossed, someone will buy the bakery. And open it back up because I feel it really, the downtown area really needs it. Um parking, huge, that's all I ever hear about down there, constant, no place to park, so. You know, if we could find a solution to that, it'd be great, but you know. That'll take some time too, but it sure would make the community members uh. Really, really happy about that. Um on another note, the music in the park was great, it brought out a lot of people, like, I mean, children, people. You know, with their kids and their families and people were dancing, loved, loved, loved it, so, yeah, so it's start of summer. Thank you.
I agree with what's being said, um I really like Kelsey's suggestion on something that. Will be something for Monroe, that's a nice suggestion. Um it'd be interesting and I definitely agree with the whole bakery thing. To me, I mean, you definitely have people that go to a bakery for a particular reason, but you have a lot of. Uh to me, for a bakery, when I'm someplace, you walk by, oh, that looks really good, I'm gonna pop in and, you know. Have a tea and whatever, pastry, whatever, so, yeah, that is a sad thing to to see. On the uh. The presentation. For the festival lot, I I really thank you for adding that because for for me personally, I'm a very visual. The, I mean, I get reading, it's a visual really kind of sets in for me, so it's really kind of neat seeing some of the pictures. Uh and concepts and uh kind of brings it more to life. And uh so, yeah, I'm really excited about it. You know, this project and seeing it going forward. I know money is definitely like everywhere else and everything else, it's always gotta be the. The problem, but especially now there's so much uncertainty, so uh makes it even harder. But it's exciting, exciting to see happen. Um and then today I worked at the Brooklyn Cutting for City Hall, that was nice and. I I thought it was uh great, uh the turnout, I had. Thought about, I was kind of wondering how many people would come, especially being in four. People work and different things and so I kind of, but yeah, I thought they had a great turnout and it was really neat seeing. Um of people that spoke. And that came to that, it was nice and then seeing the building was really kind of. You know, I kind of just seen the planning area, planning world that I call, I don't know if you guys call it, but I. So anyway, that was really kind of neat.
Right, um. Obviously, I can echo some sentiments of others who have spoken um in regards to festival lot, it's just exciting that that's moving forward. It's something that's needed, um in talking about downtown, um granted, I, when I work, it's usually on a Sunday, which is just a slow day in general, but. I actually have an opportunity to work retail downtown a couple times a month and. Um at least yesterday was significantly slower, even just some people walking by. The store than it's been um in the past and so it was very hot, so I mean, that's gonna play a little bit of a role, but at the same time, like. Seeing people walking around doesn't necessarily always equate to the business, so if I would be interested in knowing, you know, how are the businesses downtown doing in general? Um. Ever, I mean, since I have been on planning commission, we've always talked, uh it comes up time and time again, the. Downtown master plan, the downtown master plan, and I know I've been wanting, you know, I've been looking forward to being able to work on that. Um I don't think it's been looked at, is it twenty fifteen or is it twenty oh eight, it was, it's one of the other. That was the last, it got worked on.
Yeah, that was um. I was the project lead, so. I left into that's the.
Okay, yeah, so we're talking over a decade since that's been looked at, but as it stands right now. The downtown master plan, the very first part of it defines downtown as the heart of Monroe. And so if that is where we're at and if that's what the city wants to continue working toward. Um I'd personally like to see, you know, more priority kind of given to. Looking at the downtown, the festival lot's great, that's, you know, that's one piece of money that could be down there, but just that, you know. To continue to like nurture the downtown in any way possible that the city and community can. Because that is what we define downtown as right now, it is defined as the heart of Monroe. And if that is not what Monroe wants, then obviously that verbiage needs to be changed when we do look at the downtown master plan. Um I know that we have a really full schedule in terms of like agenda this year and we had talked about it when we looked at the year. That the downtown master plan isn't likely to be on the agenda this year, but maybe next year. Um and then at the same time, I, that's kind of been what I feel has been the. How it's been ever since I've been on planning commission, I've been on here several years now, is that it's, you know, the next year, the next year and so. Just as, you know, personally, as not only a community member, but also as a planning commissioner that. Is here to help to serve and volunteer for this community to get these things doing. I would love to see us focus more, whether that role is starts with us or if it starts elsewhere. To really start to put a priority focus on what currently as it stands today, even though. It was defined over a decade ago, that is still what's in place today as the heart of Monroe. And all of Monroe is important, we obviously care about the entire city. But to see more and more businesses struggling like just in the last few months. Uh though, at least the the primary stretch of Main Street, obviously downtown extends, but. We've lost now two, I think the only two coffee locations minus restaurants where you can get a cup of coffee. And so like coffee is a daily thing for a lot of people and so you do have some other options out of downtown. Or that you can, you know, you can go to one of the two Starbucks, which, you know, people love Starbucks, but it's not a local. It's not a local business, so it's different, everybody can sit here and say with confidence, it's different. Um and so it's just one of those things, it's it's sad to see when any business closes in Monroe, but. I I have a concern as a community member and as a member of planning commission on the future of downtown if. As a community, we don't start to seriously nurture it as the heart that it is. Um so that's my two cents for right now, for today, because we had times. Um other than that, it is summer, so everything's really pretty and lively. The parks, we've got a new park, we've got, you know, the parks that everybody already holds dear, um. Pickleball courts down at Sky River are really bustling uh through the summer. Um music in the park started, I didn't make it on Friday, but it's always one of my favorite things, so hopefully to do that this week. Speaking of the downtown, just to throw it out there, I would love to see some creative way for. The city and the chamber and all the people involved in that to get more of the. Like downtown businesses and others because it's an incredible event. And the community loves it and I don't think there's another location that's gonna be better suited to it. But it does pull people to that one location, which is away from, you know, some of the primary businesses in town and so just. Maybe looking at creative ways to get more businesses um involved down um in such a well-attended. Regular community event that happens every year. See, I love Monroe in the summer. It's gonna be super, it was hot today, but we have a heat advisory for tomorrow, so stay cool. There are warm weather shelters that are open, you can go to like the senior center, there's a few other places. That are air conditioned that people can go to if it's needed to stay cool and. I am done with my little mini phone box.
Alright, Kate. I have good news for you, because planning commission is not working on downtown, but the economic. Development Advisory Board is on their plate, they've actually started doing some, I believe they started doing some analysis, um. Amy Bright, one of our planners, she presented. So they they're bringing up, here's this original plan, so it's under conversation and. Although we don't have the staffing for it right now, my hope is that the Economic Development um Advisory Board. Can start that engine and so by the time it gets to the end of the year, we kind of have direction, so when our staff time. Freeze up like it's part of our program, we'll be able to take it over, so I wanted to let you know. She and I on E on E DAP, well, I'll do hear it. Um and then. That you said it was like. Just lost my total of that, that's okay. That's all I have for you. Um a reminder, city council, um well, they they're now. Taking August off, so I'm, my hope again is to get some of our stuff done in August, so we can get to them when they uh reconvene in September. I hope to bring back um critical areas that's a little bit more technically challenging than I was expecting, so I'm optimistic I'll be back with you. In August for that, um continuing that review. Other than that, I've got nothing, trying to figure out how to stay cool.
Thank you.
Hannah, you have anything for us tonight?
I have something I forgot, um I wanted to ask, I know the first half of the year, we are working a lot of different things. That were, we've been by June thirtieth, so did we accomplish all that we needed to do?
We did, in fact, um I'm I'm working on a memo for Lance because um. When the accessory dwelling unit project was moving through city council, they had some questions and would like. Uh to see what our capacity is, to look at some additional analysis. Um some of those items, I was already planning on building into phase two of the Monroe twenty-four, twenty forty-four comp plan. Phase two, which had to do with Main Street and downtown, so that's a couple of different downtown things going on. But we met all of our mandated requirements by June thirtieth. So the the next one is the critical areas has to be re- uh reviewed and amended as necessary by summer thirty-first of this year. And I believe there's one um one remaining housing item that we also need to tackle by the end of the year. Yeah, I had given it to Leanne to figure out if if we already accomplished it, which. But um it looks like we're gonna have to do one more code amendment, so uh for the mandatory items. We're doing it, we're we're right on track, so we're getting to some of the. You have more. Community is going to be providing a lot more input on how things. Yeah.
Kelsey, how's her feedback still out?
I just wanted to say hi Hannah, welcome back. Excited to see you.
Commissioner Dawkins, hi Commissioner Dawkins.
I was like, I wanted to say that, but then I forgot, I'm sorry, because I can't see you.
We established a while ago that we are semi informal, which we're. It's first names, that's okay here. Um Hannah, do you have anything to?
Um I don't have anything, it's really nice to be back, but I will be leaving again tomorrow. I'm gonna be in Europe for like a month, so Leanne's gonna be covering for me again for the next meeting, but then I'll be back for um. I think the first meeting, I was eleven, eleven, yes, sorry.
Yeah, it was nice to see you guys, but I'll be gone again. So.
And then Lance, I know you're online, do you have anything to say to us tonight?
I I don't really have anything to add, thanks.
Alright. If there are no objections. Will adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a motion?
We don't have to do that anymore.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah. That was that whole training that you and I missed.
Yeah, that's the objections thing, that's the pause.
So it's just a time, that is so weird, that makes me so uncomfortable, okay. Good meeting, guys.